Thank you, Sean. I'd like to call the County Employees Retirement System Regular Board Meeting for September the 8th to order. Eric, do you mind reading the opening statement, please?
Of course. This is a regular meeting of the County Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to KRS 61826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public live via Facebook. If you're speaking and not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. If the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If the connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to a later date.
Okay. Thank you. Sherri, could you take the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cheatham?
Here.
Dr. Carver?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Dr. Hatbart?
Here.
Dr. Milkman?
Mr. O'Meara?
Here.
Mr. McGraw?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Being a quorum present, I want to thank everybody for making time available today. Sherri, I understand there's no public comment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. You had distributed in your minute, in your board books, minutes for two previous meetings. I'd like to take those individually. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June the 9th, 2025?
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded? Or is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Minutes of June 9th are adopted as presented. The second set of minutes are for June the 13th, 2025. We have a motion to accept those as presented.
So moved.
Motion of a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion, or excuse me, the minutes of June 13th are adopted as presented. Again, I want to thank everybody for making time available. This is our regular call meeting. There's quite a few items on the agenda, but I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to chime in and give their thoughts and opinion, and I encourage that. Just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the things that I've been involved with anyway over the last few months. As many of you know, we've been working on a legislative agenda for this upcoming session. We really have tried to steer away from making any big change requests to the legislature. As everybody knows, they, they're kind of tired of seeing us coming in, but a lot of these things that we'll talk about later on are things that not only have we talked about in various committee meetings, but also in consultation with both legislations and our employers and beneficiaries as well. Over the last few months, I've had the opportunity to sit in on meetings with both legislators as well as our employer partners, KLC, CAECO, and Kentucky School Board Association. Want to thank those entities for their help and thoughts and encouragement and like to report back to you that they are very pleased with Steve, both the performance of our investments, but also the direction that separation has been going over the last few years. I was also asked to do a presentation for the Kentucky Municipal Utilities Association. One of our trustees was actually in attendance, JT Fulkerson was there, and I'd like to say that he heckled me from the crowd, but he didn't. He was quite kind, and I appreciate that. But that presentation went really well. It was at a great discussion. Anybody that's ever, you know, sat in on some of my presentations, I'd, I liked to get to that part of it. We had several questions from several of the members of that organization, particularly with regard to how to enhance the system from a standpoint of employee recruitment, number one. So look forward to having some discussions about that over the next few months. The other thing that we started doing, and I wish we had started doing it back a year or so ago, if not even before, tried to start holding a regular meeting with our committee chairs so that we could ensure that we were focusing on the things that each committee needs to be focusing on, and we move in one direction, and I think you'll see that in some of the adjustments and things that we've made to what we're going to be presenting here today. So with that, I will move on to, I believe the next item on the agenda is the CRS Actfor, the External Auditor, and they're later on. Mike, is that, is that you?
Yes. Today, we have with us Leland Miller, who's a partner with IBALE, as well as Roger Alfaro. And this is their required communication to the CERS Board, and I will turn it over to Leland.
All righty. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. All right. Well, as Mike said, my name's Leland Miller, partner responsible for, for the audit this year. Just briefly, just introduce ourselves, talk a little bit about our planning letter, and then Roger, as the other partner on the audit, will talk about kind of where we are at the process so far to date. So first of all, IBALE, we're considered one of the top 20 firms. That's just based, based on revenues. We have offices as far east as Ohio, and of course, we go to the, to the west coast and everything in between. Currently, the team that is presenting or doing the audit is out of our Boise and also our California offices, you know, being the largest firm, and also that we have a pretty extensive public pension plan at state level. We have over 15 or 16 different other states where we do the audits and the other work and everything associated with the, you know, the Actfor and the financial statements. And so we'll pick the best team that's available for this time, and so we'll have it from different offices. So, but anyway, so like I said, we're all over from the U.S., and we really appreciate this opportunity to be, to be your auditors and everything, and we're thankful for being able to be at, at this point. The, one of the things is, as Mike mentions, the fact that, you know, we have required communication. This has also been provided to you in a written form as part of the packet, I think it's about page 18 or so. But basically, it's real briefly saying, hey, here's our responsibility as auditors, and we're doing the audit according to the generally audited standards, auditing standards, as well as being a governmental entity, we're also doing it according to government auditing standards. And so between those standards is what gives us the guidance of the things we need to do, the steps we need to, to go through in order to be able to provide a, an opinion on the financial statements when we get through with, with the process. So we're, that's our responsibilities. Also, you know, of course, the scope of the audit is to, based on our testing, you know, we don't look at everything. We do some sampling and, and take a look at significant areas, but based on our processes, then we come to a conclusion on those financial statements, and that will be, you know, given an opinion, you know, whether if it's a unmodified or a clean opinion, or if there's a modified opinion, it'll be depending on the testing, you know, based on what we've seen in past years, what we've seen so far, not anticipating any issues at this point in time, but, you know, that is our, our scope of the audit, is that we'll be given an opinion on those financial statements. Also, and I won't list off each one, but there are several other items that have come to our attention that we will communicate to you either during or especially at the end, you know, if there's any violations of laws and regulations, whether they're in any unusual transactions, or just a couple of things. And we will put this in written as well as presented to the board at the, at the end of the, the audit process. One thing, you know, when it comes to auditing, we take a look at it, we do it on, based on a risk approach. And so we'll go through and we'll identify areas that we consider to be significant risks, not to say that there are issues, but based on experience with, with other plans or within the accounting auditing arena, there are certain things that are considered to be significant risk. And so just to briefly, to give you an idea, the ones that we've identified as significant risks, and the first one is management override of controls. Whenever you typically hear of financial statement fraud, or investment, or, or other issues, it's, a lot of times, it has to do with the fact that controls have been, been overridden. And so as a result of identifying these significant risk areas, we'll do some additional procedures. So the override of controls, we'll look into, of course, your internal controls, we'll look at the, have fraud conversations with people to get a feel for what's going on out there, people's got concerns and everything. The other one that we look at, and this applies to any entity, whether if you're a government, not-for-profit, or for-profit, is that the improper revenue recognition. And of course, with, you know, with your plan, you know, there's the contributions, and there's the investment revenue, and there might be some other, other revenues as well. So we'll go, we'll take a look at the, from a revenue perspective. The other big thing i- is the fact that, you know, you're reporting a net pension liability calculation based on the actuarial valuation, and so we'll do some additional testing. We do not redo the calculation, but we just look at the reasonableness of the assumptions that are used by the actuary. And then since you have some alternative investments, or also what we refer to hard-to-value, these are investments that where you don't go to the New York Stock Exchange, or you can look up on, on the, on the internet at any particular time and get a value. There's some additional procedures and things that, working with the investment managers and the investments pools or whatever. And so there's some additional risks, just to make sure that the, the amount of the fair value is being properly reported. And then I think the last one is the fact that, you know, the, your biggest out payment is, of course, is the benefit payments. And we have found that if there's ever an opportunity where things, an error can occur, or things can go wrong, is in the initial year of that, that calculation. So we had identified that the initial benefit calculation is a significant risk. Like I said, we don't have any concerns of these at this point in times. These are just, you know, from a risk perspective, we'll do some additional testing, and then at the end of the audit, we will go ahead and, you know, present our findings, if there are any, or anything from, from that perspective. We have already started the audit to date, and so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Roger, and he can kind of give you an update for, as to what we've done so far.
Good afternoon. As, as Lee's mentioned, my name's Roger Alfaro, I'm one of the other partners on the team. And over the last several weeks, we have been working with system staff to identify key contacts and obtain an understanding of key business processes. This includes a number of different interviews with staff about risk, as well as gathering information with respect to key internal controls that are in place to mitigate any errors in the financial statements, and in addition, some of the areas that Lee's mentioned. This has included interviews with staff in member services, retiree payroll, retiree healthcare, investments, contributions, the accounting team, as well as gathering information related to the information technology controls in the general environment, as well as various applications that you have there. We've also been, at the same time, doing walkthroughs of these key business processes. We find that's really important to have those interviews to gather information, but without the walkthrough and actually going through that process, where you get to see underlying data, samples of reports, or even the reconciliations, that helps, gives us a picture in terms of how your organization is conducting its business and implementing and maintaining those internal controls. So as of this date, based on the information that we have, we've, we've been gathering, we've begun the process of selecting samples in some of these key business areas, as well as sending out investment confirmation, and working with the accounting team, we've been looking at the activity within the trial balance in order to determine our further audit procedures. We're appreciative of the assistance of staff in this first-year audit. It's a lot, it's similar to drinking out of a fire hose. There's a lot of information that we need to get through relatively quickly, and we appreciate assistance of staff in making themselves available to meet with us, as well as to provide the information that we needed to date. And at this point, I have nothing further to report on our status.
I guess at this time, I guess we're welcome for if there are any questions or anything.
The only question I have, and just so that our trustees are prepared, if they get one, in, in the past, not so much with, with the CRS system, but in my dealings as mayor and that sort of thing. One of the things my auditor always did was to send out a letter and questionnaire, basically to my council members as well as myself. Do you all do that? Is that part of your all's process or not? And if so, I just wanted to make sure our trustees were aware to be looking for it.
Right. No, it's part of our process. We don't send one to, to everyone. What we do is probably on a, on a rotation basis, is we will sit down and, and just have a brief interview when it comes to their understanding of the overall process from accounting or internal control. We also wrap that up as part of our fraud interviews. So every year, we will interview someone, of course, from management, but we'll also, we coordinate with management and having an interview with someone from the board to, to have that, those fraud questions and everything, not that we're, think there's anything going on, but it's just our overall process. So the short answer is, they don't, no one needs to worry about receiving a letter or anything from us for, for this year. And if, we've already had the fraud interview, so the rest of you can breathe easy that you won't be asked for this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Roger or Leland? Okay.
Sounds good.
Taking the time to be with us and look forward to working with you.
Yep. Our pleasure too. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is the Joint Retiree Health Plan Committee Report. Dr. Carver, I'll turn it over to you. Still have you muted, Dr. Carver. Connie, you want to?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was having trouble with my computer getting it.
We got you now.
But Connie's going to go ahead and do the presentation for us. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Carver. I appreciate that. The Joint Retiree, I'm Connie Pattyjohn, Director of Retiree Healthcare. I believe everyone has seen me before. We met, the Joint Committee for Retiree Healthcare met on September the 2nd. And we first looked at, I'm going to go over the non-Medicare eligible plans. Probably you should vote on those separately, I would recommend, just because there are different benefits for different populations. So for the non-Medicare eligible, these are the retirees on the Kentucky Employees' Health Plan, which is the state's of Kentucky self-insured plan for its retirees, current state employees, and well, as some of the ancillary school system, is ancillary agencies or adjunct agencies, they call them, and so forth. But, so what we've looked at for the past, I believe they went self-insured, well, they went self-insured in 2006, but they went, they branded their own plans to the Living Well brand. So they have the same four plans available as they did last year. So I wanted to let you know that, although they have one out for RFP and got updated benefits like last year through, through the Anthem, and they're doing small RFPs to do things that they have to, like the HRAs and the, the employee benefits, spending accounts and stuff like that. So I, I hope to have an update of the latest RFP that they're finished shortly, but they've already got the premium set. The plan that the retirees have enrolled in still statistically, the majority of them, in the Living Well PPO, and that's because it has a copayment structure for medications, and then it has one for a specialist and primary care, and they seem to like that. A couple of these reports, all of these plans are the Living Well plans, meaning that they require certain things be taken into consideration, like the tobacco use fee and a living well fee. But the contribution rate that the committee selected was for the same plan they have for the past several years, is that provides the 75% covered by the plan, 25% covered by the retiree, and that is the Living Well PPO, and that rate is selected by the committee as the single rate for retirees who are, have 240 months of service credit or greater or higher July the 1st, prior to July the 1st, 2003. As I indicated, they have a tobacco fee if they, as tobacco use in the, in the plan, it's $40 for the single level, they have to pay each year, and $80 for a couple, family or parent plus. That's been the same since inception of the tobacco fee, and they do have programs where they will let them get off that fee, take a smoking cessation document that they're no longer using tobacco, and then that fee would be removed by the Kentucky Employees' Health Plan at, at the personnel cabinet. These plans, three of them have the consumer-directed health plans, roll down, yeah, you've got it, Sherri, the consumer-directed health plans available, that's embedded, meaning that it's funded by the Department of Employee Insurance Personnel Cabinet within the premium of the plan. It is not something that the board has to submit extra money to fund. So it's embedded in there, and they can roll that over each year to maybe cover a little more expense if they didn't use it. The last component I was talking about for this plan is the Living Well Promise. It's been in place for numerous years. They go to the wellbeing provider, which is Castlight, has been for a couple of years, and they take an online health assessment. And we do send out email notifications, we send out reminders, we find people who haven't completed the promise each year prior to July 1 deadline, and we send out specific email blasts to those that have not completed it. So it's also in the new retiree books that go out each year to all the new retirees by each month when they retire. It's in the open enrollment books, it's in qualifying event books. So we want to make sure everyone is aware of it and knows to complete that promise. Does anybody have any questions about those plans? Like I said, they haven't changed since basically 2014 or so, as, of course, the formulary's changed a little, and, and the premium is going up next year. The Department of Employee Insurance has put that out, but they can't, I can't show public displays of those premiums until after the 15th of September, when the, this information is put into law with the legislators under a reg. So at that time, I'll have a little more information. The committee did review the, the premiums and co, co-insurance, et cetera, and benefit changes during the committee meeting, and there are a, a couple, but not overly comprehensive. And we're going to mail that out with the open enrollment materials and make retirees aware of any changes and so forth. Open enrollment will start for these keep plans October the 1st and run through Halloween. And Medicare open enrollment will not start till the 20th of October, because you have, as anyone as a Medicare eligible retiree has, until November the 30th to enroll in the plan with us. So they have a little bit longer timeframe. The committee recommended that the same plan as last year, the Living Well High Deductible Health Plan be the default plan. For anyone that fails to enroll as a new retiree, if they don't enroll or be, aren't defaulted into a plan, then they can't take advantage of being able to change the plan one month after they're a new retiree, because our regulation gives them the option to do that, and the Department of Employee Insurance complies with that. So that is a benefit and rationale for keeping the, the default plan in place for new retirees. They can disenroll from that, and they do, do that sporadically. It just depends, most of them do find, we find they forget, that they may think it'll just transfer over as an active retiree from their keep employment or state employment or, or so forth. So it's a little bit of a confusing time. So we did not want them to go without coverage, that would impact them in a negative way. The committee didn't. And the ones, there is not a mandatory, it's not mandatory. Open enrollment is the word, used to be passive, but it's passive for both plant, both groups this year, meaning they don't have to complete an application unless they want to change plans. They're going to continue on the same application at the same level with the same coverage in 2026 as they did in 2025. Retirees, and this is number three, because I just went over the default plan, the recommendations is to allow the cross-reference. It is in the SIRS insurance statute, as I have entered there in number three. And it allows what might be a cheaper premium for a couple, who are two active retirees on this keep plan, are an active, working for the state, not retired yet, that's with a retired spouse who is, and they can get a little, maybe a little bit cheaper rate, so it's, it should be cheaper on them, and then cheaper on each agency, we being one agency, so that helps out an agency and the retiree themselves. They need to, we encourage them to make sure they check both ways, because those plans are all rated individually based on the experience of the people enrolled in the plans. So, and the cross-reference is for family only. It has to be a family plan, and that's, I think, most of, most of you have heard of cross-reference, and some of you have used it in the past. And number four, when the legislators and, and KPPA talked about the Medicare secondary payer, where the law and offering a plan to retirees who are impacted by that, meaning they are Medicare eligible, and they went back to work for an active employer, that can't be on a plan that pays Medicare primaries. So the legislators created a special group to be of them. There's about 300 to 400 a month. They roll in and out as they work after retirement and then stop. Then they can pick up the Medicare Advantage Plan when they no longer are Medicare secondary payers. So this is the recommendation to continue the same rate. Legislators did put in law they could charge a different rate if this group of people. Legislators did put in law they could charge a different rate if this group of people were, had higher claims, but they don't. So, the rate is the same as you're voting for, all the way back to number one above. Is there any questions you have about the Kentucky Employees' Health Plan? Anything about the vote? Like I said, I suggest you can roll those four points up into one vote, or I think in the past, you've looked at them as one, two, three, and four. So, that's, that's up to you all. If you want me to continue, and then you vote at the end for both, that's fine, too. I didn't want to get you confused. I wanted to offer an option.
The way it's been recommended to me, Connie, is to go through and vote on each one of these, looks like four of them, individually.
Certainly.
With that, we'll go ahead and get those out of the way, and then we'll move on to the rest of your presentation.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Tiedem.
All right. The first one on the list is a motion to approve the health insurance component is recommended. They have set the KEHP Living Well PPO plan option as the contribution plan, set the contribution rate at the single level as the 100% contribution. The trust will pay for retiree with service credit 240 months or service or greater and a participation date prior to July 1, 2003. And tie it as to this rates, rates of the Living Well PPO couple, parent plus and family plans, tobacco use fees, access to customer-directed health plans, and adoption of Living Well Promise incentive as presented. That's the motion. Is there a first to that?
No move.
Motion by Dr. Carver, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGraw. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Second motion is to approve the Living Well HDHP plans, the default plan for 2026, as recommended, if the members who do not complete an application during open enrollment be defaulted into the same coverage as 2025. Is there a motion to that effect?
No move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The third motion is to allow the cross-reference option for retirees during the 2026 open enrollment as recommended. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Dr. Carver. Second?
Second, Mr. Tiedem.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes. The fourth is a motion to set the premium for Kentucky Employee Health Plan Medicare Secondary Payer Plan as recommended. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Dr. Carver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tommy. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes as presented. Now, Ms. Connie?
Yes, sir. Medicare eligible retirees. Sherry, thank you. And this, this component of the Medicare eligible plans, Humana sent the renewal, and we talked to GRS, they looked at the, the renewal with us, and addressed the financials for the committee, and answered their questions and so forth. The plans have been the same for the past number of years, so those plans remain unchanged. They, the committee first recommended that the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan with a premium of $199.94 be set as the monthly contribution rate for 2026, as the contribution for those retirees who were hired prior to 7/103 with 240 months of service or greater. And they recommend that this plan also be set by the trust for the hazardous duty spouse and or eligible dependents that are eligible for the 100% contribution as well. The third bullet, the premium plan rate is set at $199.94. The premium for the KPPA Essential Plan will be set at a rate of $51.10. Now, this last bullet, I'm going to just give you the reason, as well as the premiums, of course, but GRS has to look at the medical only and mirror premiums, because those components are self-insured by KPPA, meaning that we're, we are the plan sponsor for those plans, and we've hired Humana and then Personify to manage and process the claims and, you know, provide all the services that a retiree on those plans would need, access to customer service, reaching out to providers, et cetera. Because the Medicare Advantage Mirror is mirroring the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan, they've had to add the dental piece to it, and that did cost a little bit extra of a fee, $529 for each person on it. There's about 94 people right now on the Mirror Plans, because they don't have Part B. There are two people who are on it due to the exceptions I'll talk about in number two. But, I will let you know that because the premium's going up on the base three plans, that this brings the premium up to the medical only, they're going to have to pay the $194.23 for that, and then the Mirror Plan premium is the $399.38. So, you add on to the dental, the total premium for that plan is $404.67. So, the retiree's going to pay something like $200 out of pocket until they get their Part B, and then they can be transitioned to the Medicare Advantage Plan, and they will no longer have to pay that out of pocket. They choose the Essential Plan, the cost is going to be $264 minus the $199, so it's a lot less than the 200 cost share that they would be looking at. That's all of the premiums for 2025 for Medicare Advantage so far. Any questions around any of that before I go on to how this exception mirror process works? It's a little more complicated.
Connie, it might be a little, little off, I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
I run into a lot of folks out here that have not necessarily our Medicare Advantage Plan, but some of those, they're running, I'm seeing run into issues that they don't have a prescription benefit. How, how does our prescription benefit work within these plans?
With these plans here, well, let me tell you, the Medicare Advantage Premium Plan and Essential Plan are just two different drug benefits with the same medical benefit. That's why there's a cost difference. The Essential Plan has the standard Medicare drug benefit, which is a deductible. We hold the deductible at $435 for those people, and then they have to pay 25% of the cost of their claims out of pocket until they reach $2,100 next year. The Medicare Advantage Premium retirees have a copay structure. They pay $10, $30, and $55 for prescriptions. They still have the same cap at $2,100 out of pocket next year. So, I will tell you, the drug benefit you see on these plans you're offering retirees are much more enhanced than anything that you could buy on the open market. You have an exceptional formulary, comprehensive with, you know, that, that pretty good first dollar coverage for it, I'm going to say. Even Essential Plan, if you want to look out there, what Medicare is, is holding as a deductible right now, it's more like $650. So, the board froze the $435 a couple of years back and has left it there, the committee did, and then the board continued that, because of the excessive out-of-pocket cost it was causing retirees. So, that's what you're going to see. You're going to see those plans on the market may not have as robust of a drug benefit, and I'm going to tell you, I have had a few people leave and go to other plans, and the majority of them want back in their plan before the end of the year, because they're not able to access benefits they were getting. And that's, that's how a comparison is of, and we have had the actuaries look at some of that in the past. Did that answer your question, Mr. Tiedem? But there is a big difference between the plans you can select.
Yes, ma'am, it did. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Connie, this is Larry Low with Humana.
Larry.
I wanted to just clarify, for the Essential Plan, I showed the Essential Plan at a rate of $55.10, not $51.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, it says $51.
Oh.
It shows $51.10 on, on the, on the board book.
Yeah, well, let me look at your, let me, I can verify that with the renewal, but that's, you know. To bring in impact. There it is. And we, I'm sorry, the computer's making it just a little bit slow, but, um, $55.10, you're correct, Larry. Can I request that we make a change to that at this point?
Yeah.
Or, let's update the, well, the committee voted on $51.50. Aaron, I have a question, if you can assist me, or should I ask Mr. Nathan?
What's your, yes, Connie?
Well, I have $51.10, that's what, and the committee voted on $55.10, so I believe we can just correct the error here.
Yes.
$55.10 on the presentation that we made to the committee?
Yeah.
Yes. So, that's the, that's what the committee voted on, was the $55.10?
Yes, it was. So, I've made a typo in this memo.
So, I think that it's, it's fine, and Michael's shaking his head to be updated here in the meeting to reflect $55.10.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Thank you, Larry.
We're happy to answer any other questions as well.
Any mistakes you see, please point that out. I appreciate that, absolutely. Number two. Number two, um, Sherry, you might want to roll down, it has a lot of bullet points, but I'm, I'm, it really, what I said in that last bullet above, what happens is in there, if they're on this plan because they failed to enroll in Part B, they will pay that extra premium until Part B's effective, and usually they can get that enrollment done within the month. I'm not going to say they always can, but that's usually what I've, I've seen for the retirees, but what this says is they would actually, the people on the premium plan, because of the cost of that plan, the $204.76 is what they would pay for the premium Medicare Advantage Plan. The two people that are on the exception, one going to a provider that doesn't take Humana and its treatment for disease that, well, it was a provider that they had to work with to, to, she was already seeing the provider, so it was a continuation of care issue with a treatment plan. The other is a transplant out of Humana's network, the Medicare Advantage, I mean, they, they refused to build the Medicare Advantage, so we had to put them on a exception plan, so they would take the payment of claims and allow the retiree to be seen at the facility. So, we've only had that happen a couple of times throughout our history since 2013 that we didn't have providers, we could just transition to the MA. So, that is number three. I've already discussed with the next red stuff, red documentation bullets, that's about the people that are on the exception, the two reasons. And then, number three is setting the default plan, which has always been the medical only plan, the rationale being if you chose anything else to give them a plan to have an opportunity to change the next month into something else, you would not want to do any Medicare Advantage Plan, because it would kick them out of, let's say they have another employer, and, you know, maybe their spouse's employer's who they're going through, and they, they want to use that plan. So, we wouldn't want to kick them out of a plan they chose, so that medical only has worked the best option for these retirees that, you know, fail to recognize they have to submit an, an enrollment and change to a Medicare Plan. That's, that's one of the harder things to communicate with people that are not Medicare, that have become Medicare eligible. And I want to let you know that we were going to present the Kentucky Group Health Insurance Board representative discussion, but there was a delay. I'm waiting on additional information from the Department of Employee Insurance. This is their board, and a position on their board to review those Kentucky Employee Health Plans that are offered to our retirees that are not Medicare eligible. And then the committee did discuss at the end that the October 23 Joint Retiree Health Plan Committee can be canceled, as it's going to conflict with the KPPA Impact Forum. So, the agenda is informational, and there's no decisions that are typically made in that meeting. We will add the materials to the February 2026 Retiree Health Meeting. But you need to vote on all of this under the Medicare eligible retirees. That's kind of where it's sitting.
Okay.
So, that's why I left all of those together, Mr. Tiedem.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Connie?
I know it's complicated. Or, Mr. Low is available for any questions about Humana.
And we appreciate you making time to be with us as well, Mr. Low. As a stockholder in Humana, we may have to, or prison at some point, but anyway. We've got three different motions we'll have to deal with with regard to our Medicare eligible beneficiaries. The first, I need to get a motion to adopt the Joint Health Plan Committee recommendation to approve the Medicare Advantage Plan, including approving the premium and contribution rate of $199.94 be set as the monthly contribution rate amount for 2026, as the 100% contribution. The trust will pay for a retiree with service credit 240 months of service or greater and a participation date prior to July 1, 2003. Setting the contribution rate for the KPPA Premium Plan as the 100% contribution, the trust will pay for a hazardous duty spouse and or eligible dependent, and approving the premium for the Medical Advantage Premium and Essential Plan for 2026 as recommended. Believe that's the one we decided is $55.10, is that correct?
It's correct, Mr. Tiedem. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion by Dr. Carver, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The second motion is to approve the medical only and Medicare Advantage Mirror Plans, including approving the premiums and allowing enrollment for no Part B and certain exceptions, and paying for administrative fees as recommended. Now, get a motion, please.
No move.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes. And then the third and final, is there a motion to select the KPPA Medical Only Plan as the default plan as recommended by the committee?
No move.
Motion and a second, please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Dr. Carver. Connie, appreciate.
Yes, Mr. Tiedem, I forgot, that very last paragraph, you, you need to vote, if that's okay, to cancel the October 23, 25.
No. I mean, I don't think that's a.
You don't think that needs it?
No, the committee made that decision.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, we appreciate the updates, the information, and as you say, this is an area that may not see as much participation, but is probably one of the more complicating and meaningful areas that we have. and meaningful areas that we have. So I appreciate the time that you and Dr. Carver and all the committee members put in to the, to the health plans.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
With that, we'll move on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Amera, are you ready to, ready to go, sir?
Ready to rock and roll. Thank you, Sheri. The Finance Committee Quarterly Meeting was held on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and we bring before the committee one action item. There were eleven requests for hazardous duty designation. KPA staff indicating that they had reviewed each request and determined that they met the statutory guidelines, and the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve each request, and we bring it to the committee for consideration. Mr. Dwan Serad is here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dwan with regard to the hazardous duty requests? Not all entertain a motion to accept those positions as recommended?
Still moved.
Motion by Bill, second?
Yeah.
Second by Mike?
Mike.
Yep. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Mike, are you available for our financial update, I guess?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay.
Before I get into that, I wanted to show this to all the board members. This is the County Employees Retirement Systems GF-OA Award of Excellence for their first ACVER on their own, issued for the six-thirty twenty-twenty-four financial year. And so this will be hung up along with all of the other ones related to KRS in the past, for the past twenty-five years, KPPA and KRS with the two systems have achieved this award, but this is CERS's first and first one on their own. So I wanted to present that to you trustees while we're And I will then begin on page twenty-eight. I will, we went through this in the Finance Committee, so I'll try to be a little briefer than I was in that meeting, but in the bottom, near the bottom of page twenty-eight, the total fiduciary net position for the CE system at the end of six-thirty twenty-five was twenty-point-one-five-nine billion. It's up nine-point-one-three percent, or one-point-seven billion from the eighteen-point-four-seven-three billion last year. The two pension plans are up, that, well, they total fourteen-point-five billion, which is an increase of one-point-three billion, and the insurance plans total five-point-seven billion, which is an increase of three-hundred-ninety-seven million. In the middle of that same page, the investments at fair value have increased overall by seven-point-nine-two percent, which is one-point-four billion. The largest increase in value is with the core fixed income, which is up thirty-seven-point-eight-six percent across all of the five, or the four plans in the CE system. If we go down to the middle of page thirty-one, this will show you the change in fiduciary net position, and you can see that there's a one-point-six-eight-seven billion dollar increase for the fiscal year. That case is, it's an increase in the fiduciary net position for the year. The prior year was also an increase, and it was one-point-seven-three-two billion, or two-point-six-one percent, or forty-five-point-three million higher. That forty-five million dollar difference between the current year and prior year change in the fiduciary net position is primarily the result of a decrease in employer contributions of a hundred-and-seven million, plus a one-hundred-and-nine million dollar increase in benefits, offset by investment income being a hundred-and-sixty-six million dollar higher. So when we get into the contribution reports on page thirty-two, we can talk a little bit about the employer contributions and why they were down, but I wanted to walk through this a little bit here. So for fiscal year twenty-five, the pension plans received one-point-two-six-one billion in member and employer contributions versus one-point-three billion in the prior year. So that's ninety-two-point-three million less than what was received during fiscal year twenty-five. The employer contribution rates for CERS non-hazardous have decreased from twenty-three-point-three-four to nineteen-point-seven-one, and for CERS hazardous, they decreased from forty-one-point-one-one percent to thirty-six-point-four-nine percent, and that's resulting in lower employer contributions in comparing period to period. The total payroll salaries for both CERS pension plans are up two-hundred-and-ten million for CERS non-hazardous and sixty-eight-point-three million for CERS hazardous. In total, that's two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-point-five million, or not, or almost seven percent higher. There was also an increase in headcount of seven-thousand-seventy-eight for CERS non-hazardous participants and two-hundred-and-sixty for CERS hazardous, totaling seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight more members at six-thirty-twenty-twenty-five. The average salaries for CERS non-hazardous remain constant, but they did have those seven-thousand-seventy-eight more members, and the average salary for CERS hazardous is up six-point-five-five percent with two-hundred-and-sixty more members. So those employer contribution decreases are offset by increases in employer contributions for both headcount and related total and average salaries of approximately forty million for the CERS non-hazardous and approximately twenty-five million for the CERS hazardous. From my discussions with board members, I think that's the intent of decreasing those employer rates so that you can see increased headcount and increased salaries by the employers, thus offsetting the contributions that have been lost by the lower rates of employer contributions. If you look at that yellow line, net contributions, all of that shows that the CERS non-hazardous pension plan had a positive net contribution of thirty-five-point-seven million. The CERS hazardous pension plan had a positive net contribution of seventy-point-seven million. And if we do remove the net investment income of two-hundred-and-thirty-four-point-eight million from the non-hazardous plan and eighty-five-point-six million from the hazardous plan, you will see that there is negative cash flow of a hundred-and-ninety-nine-point-one million and fourteen-point-nine million in the hazardous plan. The insurance plans, if we scroll down just a little bit more, we'll start with the net contribution, the yellow line item there. It shows that there's a negative amount of twenty-one million dollars in the non-hazardous and a negative amount of forty-one-point-four million in the hazardous. And if we do remove the net investment income of eighty-six-point-three million and thirty-nine-point-two million, we have further negative cash flow of one-oh-seven-point-three million and eighty-point-three million. Again, that's because most of those contributions from the employers are set at zero, and we also did not have any Humana gain share payment this, in that fiscal year twenty-five, and we had so much more in twenty-four. That is the statements. Happy to move on to the outstanding invoices, if there's no questions, but happy to take questions, too. Okay, page thirty-three, this is the new report that we've put together related to the CERS past due invoices. It used to be outstanding invoices, but now we're looking at just past due invoices as of June thirtieth. So we're now into September. A lot of that's been paid. What I reported at the Finance Committee meeting was that the total amount that was past due at the bottom is two-point-three million dollars, but four of these top ten employers are currently being worked with through legal for various reasons, and since June, two of the top ten employers have paid their past due invoices totaling four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So if we remove the, the employers that are being worked on by our legal team and the ones that have paid, we essentially have seventy-five thousand dollars of past due invoices being worked by the RCE team, looking at the outstanding amounts at June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Monthly, the ERCE team updates me on the past due amounts, and this past quarter, Mr. Owens and I met with ERCE and discussed the employers, and we intend to do that on a quarterly basis going forward, and we put a nice little chart together at the bottom that shows the progress that ERCE and the legal team has achieved over the past year related to past due invoices. As of June twenty-twenty-four, there were sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-three past due invoices totaling three-point-six million dollars, and at June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, there were five-hundred-and-ninety-seven past due invoices totaling two-point-two million dollars, which we discussed above. So a lot of work and effort going on to streamlining and collecting past due employer invoices. And the next page shows that there were twenty-three penalty invoices that were waived or canceled for twenty-three thousand dollars during the last quarter. Fourteen penalty invoices were created, and twenty-three invoices were paid during that quarter. And then I have the admin budget, which begins on that page. Yes, so this is the summary that I put together. This is all I will go through. The detail is also in there if you have questions or have some specific concerns about any line item. But for the year ended June thirty, KPPA spent nearly thirty-five million, which was one-point-eight million dollars below the annual budget amount. This was despite the personnel cabinet significantly adjusting salaries in various IT-related positions during the fourth quarter. We did receive an additional hundred-and-ten thousand dollars from the Budget Office to offset those increases, but we actually did not need to utilize that overall because we still became in under budget. There were a few specific line items that were above budget, including salaries, wages, and overtime, employer-paid retirement, and, no, these items were below budget. I apologize. Salaries, wages, and overtime, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand. Employer-paid retirement, seven-hundred-and-one-thousand below, and both FICA and employer sick leave were below by a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand. That was offset by a line item that was over budget by two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was employer-paid health insurance being over budget. So that was actually a miscalculation on my team's part or my part in doing the budget and not increasing the rates high enough to account for the increased rates. The total legal admin expenses were seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars below budget, and all other categories were one-point-two million dollars below budget in the personnel line items, and then overall operational was also under budget by eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars for the year. And I believe that's all I have. Happy to entertain questions if warranted.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Mike? Okay. Mike, I would, again, I want to congratulate you back during the, the finance meeting, but again, I want to thank you and your team and the ones involved in getting those outstanding bills focused on and caught up. That, that's a pretty significant accomplishment in a year's time, so we appreciate that greatly. Bill, anything else from the Finance Committee, sir?
No, there's a few other things that went over, but it's in our recap, and I just want to tell Mike and his team, congratulations on the certificate from the reporting as well as the preparation and work that's been done for this committee's report. Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, Bill. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Investment Committee Report. Dr. Hackbert, I see you in the boardroom chomping at the bit, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Investment Committee met on August twenty-seventh and had three items to report on. One was a staff investment recommendation, which we'll consider shortly. Second was reports on the performance of our investments for the fiscal year two-thousand-and-twenty-five, and third is we had a brief discussion and possible, about a possible adjustment to our IPS amendment, which, and suggestion for changes there. A highlight of the meeting, of course, was the report on the results of the two-thousand-and-twenty-five investment results, indicated excellent returns for both the CERS pension and the insurance portfolios. The pension system had a return of eleven-point-six-five percent, and the insurance fund had a return of eleven-point-two-seven percent. Those results compare to the previous fiscal year two-thousand-and-twenty-four of about eleven-point-seven percent combined, and a slightly lower return for the previous year two-thousand-and-twenty-three, just slightly below two-thousand-and-twenty-four. So some excellent results in terms of our investment for that fiscal year. I'd like to congratulate, thank our staff for excellent work for the last two- or three-year period for some really strong performance records and good hard work, and providing good recommendations and suggestion to the Investment Committee. Turning to the first action item, this is an investment staff recommendation by, for a new investment of one-hundred million dollars to the SVP Strategic Value Situation Fund Six. The Strategic Value Partners Fund Six is a six-point-five-billion-dollar stress fund with debt, which will be invested in North America and, and Europe. The recommendation was considered in fast unanimity during our committee meeting, after a vigorous and informative discussion with the staff and questions back and forth. So in effect, the first item we'd like to bring to you this afternoon is a vote to verify the recommendation, but prior to that, I would ask Steve to please provide additional background about the investment recommendation, including the relationship of the investment to our IPS, as well as their evaluation and assessment process that they went through in providing that recommendation to the Investment Committee. So Steve, if you would, please, just provide additional background, or you and Anthony, about this investment recommendation for the CERS board.
Thank you, Dr. Hackbart. Page forty-five, please. Sheri, I think you did a great job of providing an overview and a summary, and it was a very robust discussion of the investment opportunity at the Investment Committee meeting. And as we've discussed at committee and board meetings over the past few years, staff has maintained what I would call a structural underweight to the private equity asset class, primarily as we have viewed the risk-reward propositions offered in competing asset classes as better investment opportunities for their funds, which I think has proven out by performance recently. And while we don't believe that the current market opportunity broadly for private equity has materially improved, especially with the rise in rates and liquidity issues faced by the asset class, we do believe that this unique differentiated strategy of the Strategic Value Special Situations Fund Six presents a compelling opportunity and strategy within a market space that should provide attractive opportunities over the coming cycle. And this is with a manager that has a proven track record of execution and who has been managing money for the systems for almost ten years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anthony to provide additional detail.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. We could go to the next slide, page forty-six, I believe. So you can see, kind of like Steve mentioned, the interest rates, as everyone knows, has gone up in the past few years. So that's obviously changed the math for, for leveraged strategies like private equity. You can see it in the asset class and return assumptions that Wolter had. You can see how private equity has, you know, actually decreased a little bit, even though the volatility is still similar, of course, given the illiquidity in the long term that you have there. And so, as Steve mentioned, there's been other asset classes that have become much more attractive in its stead. So you can see how, especially up to fixed income, cash have really increased in a assumed return, and so you can already get much more return for, you know, far less risk and illiquidity. And so that's part of why we have not really done this, been as active in this area. So we go to the next page, please. For the full board's education, this is kind of our current allocation right here for the SERs pension. So, and then you can see on the right-hand side the detail that comprises the six percent or so that's in private equity. A lot of it is still in some legacy funds. So like Bay Hills is a fund-of-funds series from two-thousand-and-seven to thirteen. That's still like a quarter of the portfolio. You can see Strategic Value Partners is a significant investment we already have, given that we have committed to their funds in two-thousand-and-eighteen and two-thousand-and-twenty-one, and they've done quite well. So we go to the next page, This, this kind of gives you more detail on the strategies they have. So we primarily have buyouts and, or whatever other, what people associate with private equity. We also have some sort of distressed strategies as well, and then venture is more of a legacy thing. Fund age, we still have, we have, a lot of these funds have been in the ground for quite a while. As you may have seen in the news, their exits have been a lot slower in the past few years, also given rates, and so some of these funds continue to linger. But they, but the managers have some incentive to, to continue. But they, but the managers have some incentive to continue working with them and continue to add value there. So go to the page after that. This is a slide we've included before. Private markets is not like public markets. It's not exactly something that people just go and do a blanket search for and see what is out there to just do. It's not a different timeline. Funds come and go into the market. You know, it's been more of an extended process lately. And so, you know, there's much less one and done fundraising clauses than as there used to be during the more frothy periods in 2021, 2022 or so. But so this is something that we, it's more something that you have to ongoing be checking through on the market and seeing, you know, different funds you already have, people who spin out, other new interests in the various strategies of interest. So it's something that we're, you know, constantly working on sourcing, talking to people, finding. And so that's, so that's something that we're, we're engaging that against other areas. So you may know, we've done a lot more in the real assets area over the past few years and especially credit. So that's, we found those to be more attractive opportunities. Next page, please. There's a little detail on some of the strategies. So buyouts is the private equity strategy that probably most of you all know. The private equity sponsor will acquire a company with debt, you know, much like you'd buy your house with your mortgage. But instead of you paying the mortgage every month, you have the cash flow from the business paying down the debt. And if everything goes well, obviously after a few years, that's much more equity value just from that. Ideally, you've improved the company and grown the earnings so then that, so obviously that improves the value of the company. And then if you are fortunate in your market timing, the multiples for that sector may have also gone up. So when that aligns, then it can be quite a lucrative strategy. When it's not so much, then you get what we have now, which is a lot of difference between buyer and seller opinions of value. So that's, so given that that's not free anymore, it's a lot less attractive forward returns. So that, and you can see on the bottom right, that's information from Hamilton Land, a consultant that's shown kind of how the multiple, different multiples and coverages have, you know, become less attractive over time. We go to the next page, please. Secondary is another thing that people talk about a lot. It's been, it's a growth area in private markets. This usually involves buying assets at a discount from people who who need liquidity. You know, sensibly, that is usually a good deal for the buyer. Issue that we have is that there is a lot of people trying to do it. And so usually the more assets are chasing something, the higher the prices are. So there are not as many deals, given that how much dry patterns out there chasing these things and how few stress sellers actually are. There has been more attention to this area lately because you might have seen Yale and some of the Ivy League endowments have been selling pieces of their portfolio in the market. Those are, and those are being taken down primarily by very, very large funds, which you can see in kind of the middle to the bottom right. You have giant funds being raised 30 billion, 20 plus billion just in recent years. And so, I mean, that's just a lot of capital that's trying to put money to work. And, you know, they kind of, you can kind of clear the market with that. It's hard to find deals with people who just need to put money out like that. So next page, please. Any ventures in the other area that is in this area, but given our size, it's hard to put enough money to work to make it relevant for us. Obviously, and the risk return is different as well. It's, it can be fairly binary since, you know, there's a lot more bets. They're all minor, they're all, almost all minority stakes in companies. And, you know, the, it can be very binary. It's expected to have several mini zeros, in fact, and hopefully a few home runs that make the fun. And so that's just not really something that fits super well with what we're going for here. So that's, that's why we have done less of that. All right, next pitch. Okay, this is more about the fund that Dr. Hackbart discussed, the recommendation we had that was approved by the investment committee. This would be our fourth investment with Strategic Value Partners. Our first investment was in their Fund IV in 2017 and then Fund V in 2021. And then last year, the investment committee and board approved an investment in their continuation vehicle for a toll road asset in Texas that was part of Fund IV. That has done very well and that Strategic Value Partners saw continued added value for another, for out five to eight years. And so we found that to be attractive, especially for our real return area. And so that, that investment has been proven funded. And so you can see here the summary of what we've been committed and what SIRS has involved in the assets right now. Okay, and then I'm happy to take any questions since this has already been discussed by Steve. But yeah, if anyone has anything, have a good discuss.
Any questions of Steve or Anthony? If not, would someone please offer a motion to ratify the committee's recommendation to invest up to 100 million dollars with SVP Strategic Value Special Fund 6, subject to successful negotiations?
Someone.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Motion's made. Second it. Any further conversation or questions? Now proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion as stated, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carried. Thank you. I'd like to turn now to the report on the performance, investment performance for this fiscal 2025. As I indicated, it was a very good performance. We're very pleased with it. And I'd like to turn it over to Steve and to our consultants, Dave, Craig and Chris, for an update on issues that might be involved in terms of our future decisions about investments as well as a more detailed report, comprehensive report on how we achieve that investment return. So Steve?
Thank you, Dr. Hackbart. Page 67, please. Thank you. I can't blame Dr. Hackbart. He stole a little bit of my thunder. And as I've said in the investment committee meeting, these, these, these reports are always much more enjoyable when we have positive performance to report, which we did.
Do that, you know.
Well, you know, it was, it was a very good quarter. I think as, as mentioned in Dr. Hackbart's memo in the investment committee, both Wilshire and staff commented on volatility and uncertainty. I think those were two of the most frequently used words in our presentations. And that really was the theme for the markets during the final quarter of fiscal year 2025. As we noted, after falling into correction territory in April, U.S. public equities regained their momentum to close the quarter at all time highs with non-U.S. public equities, credit spreads and treasuries also able to join the rally. And that was really by, based on officials indicating progress towards multiple trade deals. Armed conflict in the Middle East subsided and Congress continued working towards passing a reconciliation bill and the Fed signaled the need for continued patience. Specifically for the quarter, Dr. Hackbart gave you the fiscal year numbers, but the quarter, a very strong quarter. The CERS pension composite produced a return of 6.33% and the CERS insurance composite produced a return of 6.27%, outperforming their benchmarks by 58 and 52 basis points respectively. Individual portfolio performance was tightly grouped during the quarter, ranging from 6.21% to 6.38%. So we were able to produce performance across all portfolios. During the quarter, the largest contributors to relative performance with the outperformance in the public equity and private equity portfolios, as well as the relative underweight to private equity. Again, that's been, as we've talked about many occasions, an asset class that has struggled from a performance standpoint over the last several quarters. The non-U.S. public equity portfolio performed especially well with seven of the eight managers outperforming their individual benchmarks and the overall portfolio outperforming its index by 133 basis points. The portfolios also benefited from an overweight to non-U.S. public equity relative to U.S. public equity as these markets outperformed during the quarter by over 2%. The only real area of underperformance during the quarter was in the specialty credit portfolio, which underperformed its benchmark by 73 basis points, driven by its larger levered loan exposure where spread tightening failed to keep pace with the high yield bond markets where spreads tightened by 57 basis points during the quarter. Dr. Hackbart gave you all the return information for the fiscal year across portfolios. I would note that that outperformance in the CERS pension composite, something that Ryan's predecessor used to love to highlight, really equated to about 55 million dollars of outperformance for the fiscal year for the pension portfolios. So again, a very strong year, both on an absolute or relative basis and really hitting the bottom line of the fiscal year for the pension portfolios. During that fiscal year, specialty credit, real return and real estate portfolios all outperformed their benchmarks and were the main drivers of outperformance at the total fund level. The real return portfolio outperformed by 1,044 basis points, while the real estate and specialty credit outperformed by 346 and 108 basis points respectively. The overweight to non-U.S. public equity relative to U.S., similar to the quarter for the fiscal year, was a positive impact on performance as these markets outperformed their U.S. counterparts by over 2.5% for the fiscal year. The biggest detractor of performance during the fiscal year was the 305 basis points of underperformance in the private equity portfolio relative to its public equity plus 300 basis points benchmark. At the total fund level, the attribution of this mismatch underperformance accounted for between 40 and 100 basis points per portfolio for the fiscal year. As an example, the CERS hazardous insurance portfolio would have outperformed its benchmark by 91 basis points for the fiscal year as opposed to the reported underperformance versus benchmark of nine basis points. We did talk at the investment committee. That's something we are, we're working diligently with Wilshire. I think we are very close to finalizing a proposal, a recommendation for the investment committee to adopt. Not just a different, an expansion of the benchmark is how I would consider it. A broader look at the asset class, we're going to include some additional metrics. I think we, we hope will both allow for greater transparency and insight into the performance of the private equity portfolio. Again, the current mismatch comparison, I think while it's readily identifiable with people, people can, can understand that public equity benchmark plus the spread doesn't necessarily provide a lot of information on how our private equity investments performed, especially relative to the broader private equity market. So that's something where we're hoping to be able to bring to the next investment committee. Again, we think that'll enhance the oversight and governance of the investment committee and the board relative to the portfolio's performance. Page 96, please, Sherry. Going to move pretty quickly on a couple of highlights. Attribution. The one thing I wanted to highlight on these pages is that chart in the bottom right in orange and really to highlight the diversification of the alpha generated in the portfolio. For the fiscal year, despite that market volatility and uncertainty, the portfolios and the managers have been able to produce consistent positive alpha contribution across asset classes. Again, we'll notice on the bottom right there, most assets, almost all asset classes are in the positive right, again, except for that, that private equity, which is again due to that mismatch with that benchmark. So again, that's, that's very positive. It's both, you know, across asset classes, across managers, across styles. We were able to produce positive alpha for the portfolios. Page 100, please. As everyone knows, these are some of my favorite charts that Wilshire puts together. All of the pension and insurance portfolios have produced exceptional top decile risk adjusted performance over the reported one, three and five year time periods. And that's based on Wilshire's all public plans universe. As that graph on the far right shows, the portfolios all have sharp ratios in the top 5% of Wilshire's pure universe over all of the reported time periods. Again, we believe this is an important metric as the asset allocation guidelines provided by the investment committee and the board really determine the specific risk parameters and constraints for each portfolio under which staff construction constructs and manages the portfolios. And these risk adjusted return measures demonstrate the efficiency of the performance produced by the portfolio. So I think that's, that's really a key. It's not just that there's good absolute or relative performance, but on a risk adjusted basis, the performance, the performance of the portfolios has been very good. Page 104, please, Sherry. Looking at a deeper dive into that peer group analysis, in a strong year for markets, most U.S. public pension plans similar to the CERS plans outperform their actuarial targets. What was again, similar to last year, the returns varied by plan size and were really led by small and midsize plans with larger plans broadly underperforming these smaller plans. And that was primarily due to their larger allocation to alternative asset classes. And Wilshire's broad all public plans universe had a median return of 11.06% for the fiscal year. And the portfolios produced second quartile performance within this universe with top quartile or top decile performance over the three, five and 10 year time periods. Fiscal year performance for other pure universes that we consider and we look at. The median return for the Wilshire's large plans universe, which I believe is AUM above 1 billion, was 10.10%. The BNY all public plans universe was 10.65%. And looking at Callan's large public plans, again, that's plans greater than a billion dollars in AUM, the median return was 10.91. So both on a relative to benchmark and relative to pure universe, I think all the portfolios performed very well. Page 108. Thank you. As of the end of the fiscal year, all asset classes for all portfolios were within the IPS specified ranges. And I did mention that during the second quarter or that, sorry, in the last quarter, we did, we took opportunities to reduce the overall overweight to global public equities and rebalance between U.S. and non-U.S. equities. We've maintained an overweight of a little over 3%. And that's partially as an offset to the underweight in the other growth asset class, private equity, which we've discussed. As managers have continued to call and deploy capital in the real return portfolio, Anthony mentioned that's been an area where we've had a lot of focus in sourcing new investments. We've made progress moving the allocations closer to their targets. During the quarter, a little over 90 million was called and invested in the real return portfolio for CERS funds. Page 122. Not a report I usually highlight, but I wanted to note one enhancement to this report that we've implemented, and that was based on a question that Mr. Cheetah asked during the finance committee meeting. And specifically, we've now broken down this report into asset classes with totals provided for each category. So you can see the contributions and distributions by asset class. We think that provides better insight in portfolios, cash flows. And obviously, there's, there's additional enhancements to reporting or any other reporting. We're, we're happy to consider and see what we can do. Very briefly, post fiscal year, July performance was very recently finalized. Markets were mixed for the month with public equities and high yield bonds up modestly, while core fixed income was slightly negative. For the month, the funds were able to propose post produce positive, modest positive performance to start the fiscal year, policies. All portfolios were up between 49 and 53 basis points. Markets were, pick up a little steam, yes? No, sorry. Markets were able to pick up a little steam in August with public equities up almost 2.5%. Core fixed income and high yield bonds both up about 125 basis points and commodities and real estates producing positive performance. Very early indications, we don't have final marks for the portfolios, but they're indicated up about 150 to 200 basis points for the month of August. As we all probably know, September is starting off on a very interesting foot. Despite Friday's U.S. non-farm payroll showing that hiring in the economy came to a standstill, U.S. equities remained resilient with the S and P 500 slipping just 30 basis points on the day and edging up 50, 40 basis points on the week, continuing to trade near all time high. We also did see the JOLTS survey showed fewer vacancies, but no widespread layoffs. Hiring has slowed down, but employers are seemingly in no hurry to fire workers. And while U.S. stocks didn't react to the news on Friday about the softer labor market, the rates market did with yields dropping seven to 10 basis points across the curve with two-year yields drawing, trading down to their lowest levels since September 2022. We believe with employment now declining, futures are pricing in a Fed funds rate cut next week as 100% probability and markets expect rates below 3% by the end of the year. I would note that Atlanta's Fed's GDP now, the most recent estimate for real GDP growth in the third quarter stands at 3.0%. So we're not near that stagflation point as we see the slowdown is occurring. We see it in the jobs market, but it's still yet to feed through to the real economy. I think the central question for investors is how bad economic data will drive policy responses. In this environment with significant headline risk remaining, our medium term outlook remains cautiously constructive. I do believe the combination of lower rates to come, deregulation, pro-growth measures of tax and spending bill could create a supportive environment for risk assets. We do feel that markets are a little complacent, so we're not looking at overextending from a risk perspective currently. I think there's, there's the possibility of significant market moves. I think there's the possibility of significant market moves on, certainly on headlines or data that changes the prospect for action by the Fed. I'll pause there, and any questions?
Any questions, Steve? Then we're good, and proceed.
All right, if not, that's all I had from the investment review. I don't know if Wilshire wanted to add anything. I know they talked a lot during the investment committee about the outlook, both market and economic conditions, but we wanted to be conscientious of the agenda here, a full agenda, so we did not include that material, it is available in board books.
And I think, Steve, you've covered it well, and just reiterate the great performance the funds have had.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Steve and Anthony, and basically, that concludes our report, except for one item that I did mention, we did have consideration of a possible amendment to the CRS IPS, which would allow the Investment Office to obtain two or three trustees and officers to support or not to support a fund continuation. After considerable discussion at our recent meeting, the suggestion was tabled for further review and discussions, and so that will be possibly an issue that we come for this committee at a later date. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report from the investment committee. Thank you so much, and again, I'd like to thank their investment staff and congratulate them on excellent performances last year. I think they've done a really good job, and it's really inspiring to have our trust fund ratio go up year after year. So thank you again, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Hackford. I just want to quickly echo Dr. Hackford's recognition of both the Investment Office and Wilshire, but I want to include Dr. Hackford and the rest of the committee, for that matter, this board, for having the foresight to look deeper into our asset allocation a year or so ago and make the adjustments I think that we're reaping the rewards for now. So I think everybody is, do a little bit of recognition for that. I think that's one of the things that both the investment committee and this board has done well as far as turning our attention to looking forward in our meetings versus looking backwards. Kind of hard to change history. So with that, I want to move to the next item on the agenda, the CRS employer reporting. I'm going to let Ed take this to kind of give some background, and I think Christine is somewhere.
Yes.
Ed, you want to step in here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief with this. This started in May. I received a letter from the APA, from Auditor Ball, indicating that she was making a referral to me from the Barron County Fiscal Court. And basically, that referral essentially said that the payments that were coming to the pension system in some way, in some form, didn't match up with the payroll system of the Barron County Fiscal Court. So I reached out to Ryan and to Dewan, and we talked about that letter, and Rebecca was very much involved in that as well. And as we were starting our dialogue around that letter, I received the second referral letter from the APA that dealt with the Clay County Fiscal Court, and it was essentially the same thing. And in both those letters, at the end of the letter, which were signed by the General Counsel of the Auditor's Office, they wanted to know, what are you, inform us of what you plan to do about these issues? So I had a meeting with Dewan, Rebecca, and Ryan, and you can see on page 145, the information that they presented on Barron County and Clay County. It's extensive work done, very well laid out. I walked out of that meeting having a complete understanding of the history of what had occurred with Barron County and Clay County. So I want to commend Dewan and others for the work that went into that. But I really wanted to understand the whole scope of what we were looking at, so I asked the chief auditor, if she could, look at all of the APA audits, and the APA will audit counties, look at all the APA audits since separation, since 2021, and let's just take a look at the issues, if any, that we see. And so for the county, there are three separate entities, the fiscal court, the county clerk, and the sheriff. So when you look at all 120 counties, those three entities, you're looking at 360 of our employers. Well, we have over 1,200 employers, so as you look at just what the APA would audit, you're only looking at a third of our employers. And when the chief auditor did the work on the 120 counties, it was clear that there are some other entities, employers, that may have issues going forward, so we wanted to be able to address those, and that has a lot to do with the ad hoc committee that is on the agenda for your consideration. But with that, I'll turn it over to the chief auditor, so that she can give you the color and the background of what she did as she reviewed the 360 employers for us.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. So as I went through the 120 counties, what I was looking for were any findings that were related, either that specifically said retirement contributions didn't match, or that hinted at issues with payroll. Since our contributions are tied to payroll, an issue with payroll could hint at something we may want to focus on. Understanding the importance of this request and knowing that a response was needed, I reached out to the APA and just asked them what it was, when they go out here and they perform these audits, what is it they're looking for, how are they testing this, how are they coming to these conclusions? Because if we are going to, if KPPA's an agency is going to start performing some of these reviews, I felt it was important that we kind of have an idea of what we're looking for, and if the APA could share with us what they were doing, no reason for us to start from scratch. So I've talked to them, and in addition to that, that let them know that this is being taken seriously, we are looking at this as an agency, those letters aren't just being ignored, we are planning to respond to them. And as I was looking into this and talking to Mr. Owens, he also asked for some historical background. So we have a tip line at KPPA, and Sheri, if you can go to page 164, the rest of what I'm going to talk about is covered more in detail in the memo on that page, I've all given a high-level overview. The tip line used to come to me, if you called, it'd ring to my phone, and the emails would come to my email address. This was in 2018 when I first started. I would look at those tips, if it was something that wasn't related to KPPA, it was Medicare or Social Security, something we don't handle, I could mark that as not handled by KPPA, and we could move on. But if it was something related to retirement, that was turned over to our legal team for investigation. And a lot of those ended up being turned over to our employer reporting group because it was related to the employer contributions. However, at the quarterly audit committee meetings, I was asked to give an update on what was being done on those investigations. This wasn't something I could answer in detail because I wasn't doing the investigations. So I talked to management, and we decided either internal audit would need to be more involved with these investigations, or the team that was doing the investigation should report on them because they could answer the questions. And that's where we're at right now. So that's why if you're on the audit committee or you watch those meetings, you see these updates, the tips being reported by our legal group, because they're the ones who are doing the investigations. But when you look at that report, and also their one-on-disclosures, they are addressed to the chief auditor. In the past, in 2018 when I first started, those reports did come to me, and like I said, I followed up on those, but we're not, internal audit's not doing that anymore. They are still addressed to me, I think it's just an old template that's being used. But we just wanted to clarify that when it comes to those, internal audit's not taking any action on those reports. They come to me at the same time they go to board books, they don't come to me for further investigation or follow-up. So that's just a little background on the process, Mr. Owens, anything else you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Kristin. The only other thing that I would add is that when the state auditor is asking, what are you going to do about this issue, it was incumbent upon me as a representative of this body to address that head-on and to say, we're going to put a plan in place that will allow us to ensure that, to the extent possible, those employer audits can be carried out in an efficient, comprehensive manner. And so to that end, the idea that not only the chief executive of CRS is committing to do that, but the board is committing to do that as well, and I think that's embodied in what Mr. Chairman is next on the agenda to be discussed, because if that committee is approved by the board, it will certainly send a message to anyone looking that we are taking this very seriously. We are putting in place a systematic response mechanism that will allow us to address any and all of these issues that may come from the APA or may come from the other two-thirds of our employers. We talked a little earlier during the finance report about the negative cash flows that we see in our portfolios. If we get to the point where we're completely confident that all the money that is due the system that we're actually receiving, I believe that some of those cash flow deficits may continue to recede. So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take a moment for this board to know that their interest is being adjudicated in a way that will let everyone, including the APA, and I want to thank Auditor Ball for making the referrals, because it allowed us to focus on an issue that is critically important, and we want to ensure that we're doing everything that we can to ensure that it's done as comprehensively as it possibly can be. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you. I'll take any question that anyone may have of me concerning the referrals or the requests that have been made or the work that has already been done.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I do have one comment on that. So Ed and I did talk about that. We're fully supportive of the committee. There's certainly information in the packet about what Dewan and his team is doing, so we're very much supportive of the committee. So, you know, I understand we don't have time, Rebecca's prepared, Dewan's prepared, but I think the committee is a better venue to talk through that.
Everybody, or most everybody, has, you know, had some conversation over the last month or so with regard to this issue, and I felt like the easiest and best way for us to address this and come up with a response plan that obviously satisfies both the need and the fairness that we need for our employers, nobody wants to be the audit police out there. But at the same time, if we're not collecting what is due, it's not only not fair to our beneficiaries, it's certainly not fair to the rest of the employers, because it affects whatever we set our contribution rates at. But I felt like the easiest way for us to deal with this would be to set up an ad hoc committee with a clear focus with regard to employer contributions and working with KPPA staff in developing a plan that is systematic and fair. And fortunately, we've got some people with a lot of experience on the board in employer matters with regard to contributions and HR and things of that nature. So with, I'd like to get a motion to approve establishing an ad hoc employer reporting review committee.
Some move.
You got a motion? Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion or questions? I know Ed and Kristin and Ryan and Rebecca are all, you know, happy to answer any questions, but as Ryan indicated, I think it's something that this committee would be able to focus on and be able to report back with recommendations. Do I have a first and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. With that, I would like to appoint Stephen Webb as the chair of this committee. I'd like to ask both Dr. Carver, JT Fullkerson, and Tommy to serve on this committee, and I'll serve as well, just as a liaison back to the board and whoever else I need to be a liaison to. Or all those I've mentioned willing to serve on this ad hoc committee.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. I appreciate that greatly, and Ed, I will leave it to you to get with Steve and set up a schedule of meetings and let you take it from there.
Yes, sir.
With that, we'll move on to the next order of business, and that is the CRS legislative objectives. You know, some of these are just, as Ed indicated earlier, objectives that we are, you know, trying to find ways to either cure problems or head off problems. We've had a meeting earlier, I guess it was probably in August, early part of August, with some of the committee heads, and we've made a few adjustments to this legislative agenda, but we have tried to vet that through both employers as well as legislators to see what the support levels are. Ed, do you want to run through the four items that we have on the list?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll do that very, very quickly. Item number one, just to establish an office for the CFO, which would allow then for divisions to be put under that office holder. Item number two, the very same thing for the chief auditor, to establish that as an office so that divisions could be placed there. And really believe that that is a risk mitigation strategy for the agency. Item number three...
Sorry, camera stopped working. Okay. I can hear you. Ed, I think we lost you.
Okay, no, I quit talking because I was told that I could be heard but not seen, and someone at the table said, "That's a good thing."
seen, and, and someone at the table said, that's a good thing.
Well, item three, I believe, is the CRS insurance trust.
Yes, and I'll, I'll, I'll just continue on, Mr. Chair. The, the trust would enable CRS to be able to title its assets in its name. We have the ability to title pension assets in our name, and we have started to do that and will continue to do that on the pension side as we move forward, but we need legislative help to be able to establish a insurance trust that would enable us to title in our own name. The last item is the sports betting legislation that was passed a couple of sessions ago by the General Assembly. They indicated that they would use those resources for the pension plans. The legislation doesn't clearly designate how that money is to be separated. We, we simply want to, to get at least a fourth of the share of that money as it is allocated. My understanding today is there are approximately $80 million that has been raised thus far. They said they would only allocate it during the biennium budget year, so this is the year that they will determine who will be the recipient of those funds. We, we simply believe that the counties and the cities deserve an opportunity to share in, in that revenue base as well. So those, those are the, the four items, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Can I get a motion to approve the legislative objectives for the upcoming 2026 legislative session?
Sound move.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Discussion, Bill, I see your hand up, sir.
Yes, sir. I was wanting to request that we have a vote on each one.
Okay. All right. Let's, I'll, I'll take that as a, what would you call that? Amendment to the motion, I guess.
Okay.
Is there a second to that amendment to the motion? Second by Dr. Carver. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. We will, we will take each individual objective individually. The first is to resubmit what was House Bill 71 to establish the Office of Financial Management within Kentucky Public Pensions Authority. And I, I would be remiss if I did not say that this might get taken care of without legislation, based on conversation I had with Ed earlier today. But, you know, if that's the case, then this one will drop off. But with that, now, is there a motion to accept item one? Legislative. Got a motion by JT? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Webb. Any discussion? All in favor by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Second item is the chief auditor, which would amend KRS 61.505 to establish the Office of Chief Auditor within the Kentucky Public Pension Authority and amend KRS 12.02 to conform. Bill, I see your hand up.
Well, I was, for discussion.
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion to accept?
Sound move.
Sound moved.
Got a first and a second? Now, Bill, discussion?
Yes, I, I was wanting to ask some clarification about executive management team and divisions reporting to the office. If I could get clarification on what those mean in the explanation.
Okay. Ed, you want to take that?
Yeah, I, I will, Mr. Chair. Bill, I, I think I, I, I hear your question being, where would the Office of the Chief Auditor report? It would, it would continue to report to the KPPA or?
Well, I was trying to figure out what the responsibilities of the executive management team. What, what do you, what are you referring to there?
I, I'm not, I, I'm not sure I understand the question, but the, the executive team within the Office of the Chief Auditor?
No, I, I read this to be the executive management team of KPPA. Is that not what you meant?
Oh, so is the executive management team, or is that?
The, the executive management team would be the executive management team of KPPA, but I don't, I don't understand the question. Yes.
Well, that's, in my experience, both in, in private enterprise as well as in government, the, the Office of Internal Audit was off to the side and not part of the executive management team that would be making, be involved in, in design of procedures that later they would be responsible for, for auditing. So it would seem that, that this would, would dilute some of the independence of the internal audit team and kind of go against the recent legislation and make it a little difficult for when they would audit those procedures that they were involved in design and implementing.
I understand the question now. The, the question, as I understand it, is, Ed, if you make the, the, an office of the chief auditor and make that office part of the executive management team, are you blurring the lines between what would be audit and audit trails and decision-making that is the historical purview of the executive management team? If that is, if, if that's close to the question, I, I would answer to say that I don't believe that there is a necessity that the audit division be, be part of the executive management team or offset from it. You can have the audit, the chief auditor as, as an office without having the chief auditor as part of the decision-making apparatus within the organization. When we had the, the most recent orientation of new trustees, the internal auditor was listed by KPPA as a member of the executive team. That doesn't mean that that person or the person in that office would then be making business decisions. It simply means that there is a, a reason to elevate that position, and here it relates to risk. I was very pleased to hear the external auditors speak to, they are risk-based auditors. There is a, a function for ensuring that you have a robust risk infrastructure. And if you don't have the ability, and, and I'll simply say that the employer audits are, are a part of that. For us to be able to put ourselves in a position where we can do 1,200 employer audits over, over a rotating five-year period, we're going to need a division under, if the committee that's just been established determines that the place for those audits to occur should be under the internal auditor because that's what they do is audit, then we would need a division to be able to do that. And currently, where the internal auditor is slotted, there is no room to have that functionality done. So I, I, I hear the premise, I, and with respect, reject the premise that if you are part of the executive team, that you have to be ma, part of the business decision-making apparatus. So I don't see a blurring of the lines between the two.
Well, I appreciate the color, which, which I think further explains the purpose of this in order to have additional duties to be put underneath the internal audit from the ERISA. But that's before the committee has analyzed the situation and come forward from recommendations. So it, it seems premature to, to ask for this KRS and spend the energy and the influence that we might have with the, the legislature on something that internally, design-wise, we haven't decided where we want to go yet.
And, and I, I take the point, Bill, but in, in Barron County, this was the second year in a row that this finding was found. Now, it wasn't referred to me, but it was referred somewhere last year. With Clay County, it was the third year in a row that this is, that this issue has been referred. So to say that, that in essence, we need to wait around to figure out how to, how to address this issue comprehensively, to me, doesn't, doesn't provide the kind of solution that it's clear we need from the referrals that we're receiving.
Well, Ed, we've, we've all had a good history of count, point and count conversations.
Yes.
I'm not sure we should continue that. This seems to be the, the purview of this ad hoc committee, these conversations.
Absolutely.
Rather than, than the full CRS. And, and voting on a legislative agenda before all that happens seems premature. So I'll end it there.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion and a second on item two, the legislative agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Item two passes. The third agenda item is the creation of the CRS insurance trust in order for the CRS system to hold the insurance proceeds, the trust in the CRS name. Anybody have questions on this item at this point? Yes, sir. Bill?
Yes, I, I hadn't seen the cost associated with going forward with this and as well as the timeline. Is this a, a six-month, 18-month, two-year process? Is it, is it a few thousand dollars? Is it, is it outside counsel, internal? Those are the type of backgrounds. I, I haven't seen that related to this discussion.
Okay. I think there's a couple of things there that, you know, I would point out. Number one, we just, in the last, what, six months, give or take, started titling new investments in CRS name. So whether this is an issue that we start here and that's our, our direction we go in the future, or whether we're looking back and re-titling assets, for all of them certainly be open for discussion, but you've got to have a mechanism to do it first. And as we've seen in a lot of cases, when dealing with legislature, you're lucky if you can get it through the first session, although we have had very little pushback in, in the legislators that we've talked to about this issue. So is there a cost to it? I'm, I'm sure there, there is, particularly if we look backwards, but all those are management details. We've got to have a, we've got to have a mechanism in place before we can even address those things.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So would this, this wording be a may or a shall? Because it, would it, would it put us under the gun that we have to do it regardless of the answer to those questions or that we have the option to do it?
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with a may. I think Ryan might have a little bit of information with regard to some IRS letters and things of that nature that we have to also get in place, but I'm certainly fine with a, a may versus a shall. That gives us flexibility to do what we want to do or not.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? There are none, I'll entertain a motion to accept item number three, the legislative agenda.
Sound move.
Second.
Have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. And I hope we don't have any problems with item four. If we can get, if we can get $20 million in, in, in extra proceeds, I'm sure Steve can find a place to put it. But item four, can I get a motion to accept?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by JT. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Appreciate everybody's input and look forward to working with everybody as we try to move forward with these items. Ed, I believe you're, you're next on the agenda with your CEO report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time, I'll just take any questions that anyone may have from anything that's on the report.
I encourage everybody, if you haven't had a chance to read through Ed's report, I think you'll find it's pretty comprehensive and gives you an idea of a lot of the background items that are going on behind the scenes that you may not get an opportunity to, to see and hear about depending on what committees you're on. So with that, Ryan, I will, I will turn it over to you and Rebecca for a report from KPPA.
Sure. In the interest of time, I'd like to say the same as Ed, but there's a couple of things I just want to touch on quickly. I'm going to jump over the staffing update. Highly recommend you read the report. In terms of the interns, we had very successful interns. We've had leadership academies. We've taken advantage of what the governor has offered with the state, and that's been very productive again. I'm going to paraphrase here. Strategic plan, very important. Rebecca's done a heavy lift with that. There's information in there. I do want to flag the six mandates. As I mentioned before, we hope to bring back, maybe rebranded in the future, the Leadership Academy, Future Leaders of KPPA, they've taken a project on. Very impressed with the product. We will bring that back to you for review and commentary in the future, but we think it was well-positioned. The budget work, work group has moved forward. Obviously, everybody has the impact forum. We've got final counts, so thank you very much. We think that's going to be exceedingly exciting and looking forward to very much. Then I, I do want to touch on the kudos because we have some great people, do some great work throughout our team. We talked about the invoicing earlier. Major progress with that. Very pleased. Mike deserves some kudos as well as the ERC team. Everybody's done a really Everybody's done a really good job. Mike showed the GFOA. I, I think he deserves a lot of credit on that. Separating two actors, that is a big task. That is a big task. He led that team. They worked really hard on it, so I want to make sure I highlight it. And just last two, as I sit across from Dr. Akbar and look at the time, Crystal Hughes, there's a shout out to her. Please read that. And then recently, I got a handwritten letter. It was talking about loss of a loved one, loss of a spouse, and it, it reached my desk, and I read it three times. I thought it was very impactful. I handed it to her, and she's like, "We get these all the time." The team does a really good job and helps people through a really stressful time, and I want to make sure I mention that out loud. So kudos to that team, kudos to, I guess, KPPA operations. So thank you very much.
Ryan, I, I don't, didn't know whether you wanted to address it or not, but I certainly want to take the opportunity to, if you haven't seen in your emails, Rebecca is pulling the trigger on actually going to the other side of the retirement system.
Yes.
I'm going to congratulate her on, on retirement. I will be interested to see how well she takes to it. She seems to have a little bit too much energy for going to full stop. So Rebecca, I wanted to thank you for your service. I, I know you've been with KPPA, KRS for a good number of years, and I want to thank you for your, your time and your service, and we'll certainly not only miss your insight and background, but we will certainly miss your energy and smile. So Ryan, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that. I'm going to go through to you over the last year, get your feet on the ground.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I mean, Rebecca, I, I personally want to thank her for staying on. She's been a huge asset, and it's about 100 years she's been with the agency. It's hard to compete with granddaughters. I thank her personally, and we will have a reception. I hope everyone can attend, and I will extend my gratitude. So thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
I, I appreciate that. Those are very kind words. I have invested a lot, and it's kind of my baby, KPPA. I love it. There's a lot of good things that happen here. We have a terrific staff. We do important work. I will miss it, absolutely, but it's been my honor. 31 years technically of honor. Started 38 years ago. We won't do the math on that. Thank you so much. Appreciate your encouragement.
Thank you, Rebecca. Ed, I think we need to go to a closed session for discussion of legal or pending legal action presented to KRS 61.810. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone.
With that, a motion having been made in open session moving to closed session for specific purpose, and such motion having carried by majority vote in open public session, the Board should now enter into closed session to consider litigation matters presented to KRS 61.810. Closed session is necessary because of the necessity of protecting confidentiality of CRS's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege. With that, Sean, would you please take us?